Good morning. I call the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five Agenda Brief and open. Call to order, Barbara Acoch, invocation, Commissioner Daughtry, pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Gurley.
Well, that's invocation.
Is that what it says?
Well, mine says invocation, Joe Daughtry, pledge allegiance, Chris.
Okay, well, I skipped lines.
No problem.
Tell them about where we hit that.
It's been a rough morning. Approval minutes. Question of agenda.
I have two adjustments, two walk-ons. One is a twenty twenty five King's Messenger's Day proclamation that will be under consent and then unless somebody wants to read it and then I've got a contract, a change order number one for stormwater improvement projects totaling thirty-one thousand, five hundred and five dollars and six cents, ninety percent funded by FAA and this needs your approval. This is for a stormwater drainage project out at the jet port.
Thirty-one, thirty, I know I got.
Thirty-one thousand, five hundred and five dollars and six cents.
Is that a change order on the stormwater that they were doing?
Yes.
Okay. They must have run into something.
It's needed to, for aggregate base core stone for use for undercut backfield, for additional backfield, it sounds like.
Is that for the drive?
This is on stormwater improvements. I would think it would be the other, it may be under a drainage tile or something that you're undercutting.
Anyway, they got with about four thousand dollars in it soon.
Yes. Uh, and maybe, I mean, yeah, I think that's what it is. It takes twenty-nine days there for additional, twenty-eight days for additional work. So those are two, those are the only two walk-ons I have. They're both under consent. Those would be number fifteen and sixteen.
All right. We'll go forward, move motion to approve the adjusted March eighteenth agenda. Special presentations.
We have a motion, item number three is a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash nine honoring former county manager Will Sullivan. That's a resolution as presented by Commissioner Chris Gurley. Number four is a motion to approve the twenty twenty five Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation. It's presented by Brian Volk. And then you move on to your appointment committee where you, item number five is a motion to approve the appointment of Josh Mazingo for the hyphal planning board ETJ position.
And then we have one other recommendation for vote at our next meeting for Richard Proctor to the planning board.
Okay.
And Ruth Fason.
And recommend Ruth Fason to the Wayne County Council agent. Let me mark that to make sure I don't forget that.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, we have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for construction of Rosewood Middle School. And then any questions on that?
We're going to discuss that now or then?
No, you can discuss it then, unless you have something specific you want to answer.
I just know what actually ended up being.
Has the board, the school board approved that?
They have a meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
They called a special meeting tomorrow.
Yep.
At one o'clock.
That even made Channel Five.
It even made Channel Five?
Oh, yeah.
Really?
Nothing changed on the junior degree.
Yep.
Uh, number seven is a motion to approve the feasibility study contract for the courthouse annex in Chestnut Street Detention Center to intrepid architecture subject to the county attorney's approval and appropriate budget amendment. And that's for the workover on looking at the old jail in this building for renovation, facelift. Uh, consent agenda, we have our late present use value applications. Do we have any of those? There's one at least.
Excuse me, could we go back to seven? Uh, in that agreement, are we also extending that for the building that we have?
Community Drive, eight hundred.
On Community Drive.
Corporate Drive.
So that is included in that? Okay, thank you.
We will, yes. Looks like a twenty-six acre tract of woodland. Forty-seven point three eight acres. Part of it wooded, part of it open.
So on that, a section like that, it's ten acres of open farmland and twenty acres of woodland, correct? Or does it all inclusive of that?
Uh, that's an Allen looking question.
I think it's ten acres, period.
I think it's ten also.
It's not twenty acres on the woodland?
No, thanks, I, because I got a piece that's got nine, nine point six acres and I'm having to pay, pay full price on it.
I'd buy a little, little track from my neighbor.
I could ask Alan and get you to answer him.
It don't matter. I just, I just saw that.
Tell me one or two. Okay, moving on to the budget amendments.
Good morning.
Morning.
We'll start with budget amendment number two sixty-one from services on aging. This is to allocate Medicare improvements for patients and providers grant funds that were received this year for ten thousand, six oh nine. Number two sixty-four, this is for the library. The purpose of this budget amendment is to accept funding from UNC for the hour state, hour work programming supplies and the amount of nine hundred dollars. Budget amendment number two seventy-three is for the sheriff's office. This is to record receipt of revenues for controlled substance tax from the North Carolina Department of Revenue in the amount of ninety-three dollars and forty cents. And the final budget amendment is number two seventy-six. This is from the detention center. This is to transfer, transfer funds to cover anticipated shortfall in the central prison shared expense safekeeping line item in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. They're moving these funds from their professional service legal line item and also from their janitorial line item.
Congratulations, only four budget amendments.
Thank you. That's all that I have.
Okay. If there are no questions, we'll move on to number ten, the request to open the request for applications process for fiscal year twenty-six opioid funding.
Number, uh, good morning.
Number ten and number eleven are both requests to use opioid funding, just requesting approval from the board to start that process. One is to open the application processing for grant funding and this number eleven is to start the request for proposal process to open peer support programming within Wayne County. That will be a county sponsored program.
So that's an annual?
Yes, sir.
Thing that will be happening?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, good.
Thank you very much.
It should last for years. Thirty, about thirty years of this, so. Uh, if there's no questions on that, we'll move on to number twelve is a motion to resolution declaring surplus real property and approving the sale of one thirteen North Carnegie Street. And number thirteen is, uh, three twen- three two two eight Central Heights Road and number fourteen is four twenty-six Piedmont Airline Road.
And all three of these are previous tax foreclosures. Um, North Carnegie Street and Central Heights, both of those offers came from Mr. Adam Gonzalez. The first one was one thousand, six hundred, thirty-five dollars for Carnegie Street. Um, for Central Heights, it was five thousand dollars. And then Piedmont Airline Road, that offer was received by somebody else. That was Christopher Jones in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred, eleven dollars. So Carnegie Street and Piedmont are jointly held by the county and the city of Goldsboro and then Central Heights is just the county. So after approval today, we're advertised for upset bids and then we'll send the necessary ones over to the city for approval.
Have you got a map of the Piedmont Airline Road?
It's, um, it should be. It's in the agenda. It's close to the base, that base wall.
It's a single wide trailer, I think.
It's about half a block away from the base wall. Most of those properties down there are vacant or have older trailers that have been abandoned.
Okay, that's good enough.
Has that already set aside the upset bid processes? They've already gone through all of that?
No, we'll do that after you all approve it.
All right. Any questions on those three? If not, we'll move on to number fifteen, which was a walk-on that we just altered and that was the twenty twenty-five, um, King's Messenger's Day proclamation. I will read that right now since it's on consent. Uh, whereas nineteen seventy-four, a quartet began practicing at Pinkney Baptist Church with Janet Collier on the piano and whereas on, by December thirty-first, nineteen seventy-four, Gerald Bedford, Mike Acoch, Wayne Pittman and Reverend Rudolph Rowe were ready to perform for the first time at Pike's Crossroads Church as the King's Messenger's Quartet from Pikeville. And whereas today Gerald Bedford remains the only founding member and now sings with John Price, Tim Wells, Joe Bailey, Johnny Henson, Donald Woodard and Jeffrey Bailey. And whereas in celebration of fifty years of shared gospel music, not only in Wayne County, but across North Carolina, Virginia and West Virginia, the King's Messengers will have a free performance on March twenty-second, two thousand, twenty-five, six P M. at the First Church in Goldsboro. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five as King's Messenger's Day in Wayne County, the thirteenth day of March twenty twenty-five, Chairwoman Barbara Acoch. Any questions on that one?
I was, I was called and asked to, to get this resolution and I kind of was hesitant about it, but Sylvia and Carol was nice enough to draw it up for us.
Okay, good deal. Uh, Mar- on number sixteen was the other walk-on and that was the change order that we discussed earlier for the airport for the undercut, uh, change order number one. And he asked that it be walked on today so that the contractor wouldn't be held up. Is there any questions on that? If not, then after that, we have new business, uh, discussion of April the fifteenth at twelve P M. as a date and time for ribbon cutting at the new Health and Human Services building. I'll let Carol lead that discussion.
Um, that's literally a month away and so we need a decision today once everybody's here after the nine o'clock hour so that we can get things done. That will be not only the ribbon cutting, but revealing the, um, lettering on the building for, uh, Borden Parker. And, um, we would, uh, do this at twelve o'clock, um, to accommodate the local attorneys and judges, um, so that they would not be in court. So we would have refreshments to accommodate that as well and invite the world. So, um, we have a lot to get ready for if you guys approve that.
Will the building be occupied by the time?
Probably not.
Really?
Yeah.
We still, we still have hangups?
Uh, there's, I mean, they're still finishing up some things, but.
That's a big building.
Yeah, that's a lot of people coming in that building. It's going to take some time to, you know, they got to stay open where they are and not have a, uh, interruption of services, um, so.
So are they moving in sections?
Yes.
So to speak?
Yep. They've got it all orchestrated out how they'll be moving. I think they're still moving furniture in at this point.
We're still with furniture and refrigerators for the health department.
Has the furniture been delivered yet?
Some of it has.
But I'm talking the stuff from up the way.
I think some of it has. I was in there the other day. Uh, they're moving the, uh, big refrigeration units for, uh, medicine and stuff in and trying to get all that in place, mechanicals for that.
So when will that move start?
They're talking about the end of May, I think, isn't it, ain't it?
Yeah.
End of May?
I would say it probably start within the next, moving probably within the next thirty days is what I would guess.
I would think.
We're not going to wait on the opening to, you know, we're not going to have, we're not going to wait till they're fully occupied unless you all say so. We're just going to go ahead and move with the ribbon cutting at the front door.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be better to have the ribbon cutting before it's occupied.
Yeah.
Great.
Any other questions on that?
And where do we stand in regards to occupying the jail?
They're still working through the state inspection and then our punch list too, as well as we have a punch list of items, but it's, I mean, there's, I think there's a hundred and eighty items on the state's inspection report to take care of.
Do what? A hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
Wow.
We're a model, we're a model jail.
Well, I mean, I mean, it could be a little small, but you know, from the little, little things to, I don't think it's anything major, but it's going to put us behind in occupant.
They were, they were pushing us for, to build it and get our D O and not add drag to their feet.
Well, I think it's, you know, you got to go through, uh, T A Lovin's punch list. Then we got a punch list a mile long and then the state comes in and inspects it from the state side and they got their own punch list. Now, the three have got to come together and then there's still some negotiating between us and T A Lovin and the architects over things that were not in the building the way we wanted them. And there's going to be some, you know, negotiating on the price to cover those missteps, so.
And I'm assuming those mistakes were in T A Lovin's favor.
They're going to be in our favor before it's over.
Yeah, I know you that good, but I was.
Well, actually most of it will be architect and engineers issues.
Yeah. So we're just going to figure out who's going to pay us.
Back to the finger.
Things that we didn't, that didn't turn out is quite like I wanted them to, so I don't think we should pay for certain items. We're not going to pay for certain.
There you go. Okay.
Anyway, it's, it's coming, it's coming together. They're over there working every day fixing things and I, I go by there all the time, so. Uh, then we have county managers' report, board of commissioners committee reports, closed session, and we do have closed session, and then adjournment.
I got a question. Is there a reason that flag is closer to the door than that one is? Joe, do you mind moving that thing to the right to kind of leave them up? Excuse me, sorry about that. They just don't look the same. They move it to the right.
Put it, put it between?
In between them.
Oops.
All right, sorry about that.
And do we have time to go into closed session now?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session?
And that would be to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body to preserve attorney-client privilege.
I asked the, uh.
Oh, we got to vote, okay.
Just make sure we're all clear. After we vote.
The right one, not the wrong one, but the right one for it. I go in the...
I call the March 18th, 2025 regular board meeting. Chairman Barbara A. Cott will call the meeting to order. The invocation will be Commissioner Joe Daughtry.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for our many blessings and bringing us together today. Help us keep your word in mind as we discuss and make decisions for the citizens of our county. We ask for your wisdom. May we seek your will and pursue your glory through all that we say and do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance, Commissioner Gurley.
Close your eyes and face the flag to the back, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Crawford?
You have a... You need to make a motion to approve the March 4th, 2025 minutes.
So moved?
Motion on the floor to approve March 4th minutes.
All right, thank you for that. Then we have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. A walk-on under consent for... As number 15 is a proclamation for the 2025 King's Messenger Day proclamation. Also, a walk-on is change order number one for stormwater improvement projects at the Wayne Executive Checkboard. And that would be number 16. And those are all of the changes in the agenda or walk-ons. You would need to approve... A motion to approve that March 18th, 2025 agenda.
Motion on the floor?
Amen.
On the floor, Wayne, Commissioner A. Cott.
Thank you for that. Moving on to special presentations. Item number three on your agenda is a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-9, a resolution honoring former county manager Will Sullivan, as presented by Commissioner Chris Gurley.
Madam Chair, I appreciate the opportunity to allow me to read this proclamation. Resolution 2025-9, a resolution honoring former county manager Will Sullivan, whereas serving once community and its citizens in noble calling. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners deserves... Desires to honor the life of public servant Will Sullivan. And whereas Will Sullivan was born in Wayne County, North Carolina in 1936, graduated from Harvard High School. And whereas Will Sullivan became a clerk in the Wayne County Tax Office in 1962, the assistant tax supervisor in 1967, the tax administrator in 1986, and the Wayne County Manager in 1989. And whereas Will Sullivan as county manager established a physical stability that showed Wayne County's commitment to being a good steward of the taxpayers' money. And whereas following 12 years as the county manager and 40 years of service to the citizens of Wayne County, Mr. Will Sullivan retired and joined the faith, his faith, family, and farming until his passing on February 19th. 2025. And whereas Will Sullivan was married for 61 years to Edith Dorton Sullivan, they have a daughter Rhonda Sullivan Taylor, a son-in-law Trey, grandson Cameron Taylor and wife Meredith, granddaughter Caroline Taylor Phillips and husband Blake. Therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and recognize the late Mr. Will Sullivan for his dedicated and diligent service to the citizens of Wayne County and for answering the call to serve with such dedication. Adopted this day, 18th day of March, 2025, Barbara A. Cott, chairwoman. Madam Chair, I wish to make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Have a motion on the floor to adopt Resolution 2025-9 and honor former county manager Will Sullivan.
I've got family here, Rhonda and Trey, Cameron, Caroline, Blake, Meredith, and... So we want to present the flag that flew up to courthouse. I was already telling some people to walk around. I probably, other than Rhonda, while I stayed, knew... Mr. Will knew me as long as anybody in this room other than Rhonda. She said, "She's just a few years... She don't look it." But this is a... Mr. Will, he... Cameron spoke at the funeral. And there's a few things that he said, you kind of... Mr. Will's... What's the right word to put it? Prugal?
Prugal, yes, prugal.
Tight, that's what you want to call it. Back to the... Back to the water and to the... To the drinking peanuts. I don't think Trey signed up for that day, that day. But he... He was a good man, very good friend of my daddy's for years. Went to school together. And he referred to me... He referred to me as his commissioner. And I will tell you that Mr. Will Sullivan is the reason that we have the convenience sites open the exact same time, six days a week. They called me one day, he said, "Chris, I need you to do something." I said, "What's that, Mr. Will?" He said, "There's no reason why y'all closed half a day on Wednesday." So that told me that he drove from Church of God Road to Peyton Town Road, and it was closed. I said, "I got it, Mr. Will." He said, "To be sure, y'all got enough money up there." And I know he knew we did, so anyway.
Yes, thank you, Chris. Chris's father and my father were very good friends and died about a week apart. So as you know, it is very tender. My family and I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for recognizing my father, Will Sullivan, for his 40 years of service to Wayne County. Rising from a clerk in the tax listing department to serving as Wayne County Manager for 12 years was quite an accomplishment. My father was a very humble man, who gave all of the credit for his achievements to the commissioners, his department heads, and the employees of Wayne County. My father loved Wayne County, but most of all, he loved the people of Wayne County. Thank you for honoring his legacy today and for your service to this county. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could I make a short comment? Mr. Will was not only a great county manager, but I didn't go back quite... Well, I went back as far as Mr. Will is not quite far back as Chris. But Mr. Will's father, Mr. Cleat, was in the trucking business. And when I went into trucking business, I'd buy... And when I went into trucking business, I'd buy his trucks that he traded in because I knew they had been looked after. And then come to find out that Mr. Will drove them, so we could sit and talk truck driving stories. I had to be careful what I said to him, though, because I wasn't quite as careful a truck driver as he was. But as Chris said, there was not a finer man in Wayne County, not a finer man in Wayne County than Mr. Will. And thank y'all so much for coming, and it's an honor for us to honor Mr. Will.
He is one of the reasons that we're in the financial stability we are because he pinched pennies and cut them in half a lot of times. Thank y'all for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to do that. I told Rhonda she's a whole lot stronger than I am, I'm about to cry when she's up there, just...
I was going to take you an extra...
I had the pleasure of working under Mr. Sullivan. He actually hired me to come here. And I remember going into office in this building when he hired me and talking about pinching pennies. I was working in the planning department. We had a bulletin board that looked like it came from World War I. And we said, "We want a new bulletin board." It should be a bulletin board. They said, "Go to Thomas Office Supply and price one." Price one.
Not buy, like, price.
Remember, I worked for Connie, too. I went in, it was $35. I had to come back and get a signed purchase requisition from Mr. Sullivan. But I received calls from Mr. Sullivan all through the years. I mean, he was always... He was county manager here for just a short term while I was here, but he was always in constant contact with an issue or needed help or needed to help somebody or trying to find out what's happening. But I always enjoyed his conversation. You're going to miss him. Thank you. All righty. Moving on to number four is a motion to approve the 2025 Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day proclamation, as presented by Brian Volk.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Board members. It's my honor to present the proclamation for a vote and approval today. What we're talking about is the 2025 Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day Joint Proclamation. Whereas 2025 represents the 52nd anniversary of the end of the American involvement in Vietnam conflict. And whereas 2025 marks the 60th anniversary and start of the ground campaign in Vietnam when President Lyndon Johnson authorized the landing of the 9th Marine Expeditionary Brigade to defend the Da Nang Air Base in South Vietnam. And whereas thousands of brave Americans served our country in this conflict with courage, honor, and valor. And whereas more than 58,000 individuals made the ultimate sacrifice in Vietnam and more than 300,000 more were wounded in combat. Whereas 1,626 Americans are still missing and unaccounted for from the Vietnam conflict and their families, friends, and fellow Americans still in their uncertainty today concerning their fate... I'm sorry, uncertainty concerning their fate. And whereas in 1982, the Vietnam Memorial was dedicated to commemorate those members of the United States Armed Forces who died or were missing in action in Vietnam. And whereas the Vietnam War was an issue among the people of the United States so that the crossfire of public debate about the involvement of the United States in the Vietnam War deprived many members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War of the support and appreciation for their service to our country. And whereas President Donald J. Trump signed the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017 and on March 28th, 2017, to officially recognize March 29th as the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day and encourage the people of the United States to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of the contributions of veterans who served in the United States Armed Forces in Vietnam and the importance of helping such veterans readjust to civilian life. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Goldsboro City Council hereby proclaim March 29th, 2025, as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Wayne County and the city of Goldsboro and urge all citizens to join this special observance and take the opportunity to honor and thank our Vietnam veterans for all they have given in service to our country. And of course, the adopted and appropriate signatures.
Thank you, Ryan. Have a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Have a motion on the floor.
Thank you so much.
Seems like yesterday all this was going on, don't it?
Yeah, it's a little bit before my time, not much. But it's... You know, I spoke last night at the city council meeting a little bit. And just talking about the event, it'll be on Saturday, the 29th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Wayne County Museum. Official invitation to any of you that haven't heard about it, or if you'd love to have any or all of you there. It's... Unfortunately, we just can't get the word out to people, you know? There's so many people. We've had the Purple Heart Banquet for 12 years. And every year, I'll walk into a place and see somebody with a Purple Heart hat. And I'm like, "Hey, did you hear about the Purple Heart Banquet?" And he's like, "No, I've lived here my whole life, never heard about it." But with this, we're planning a great day. I believe we're going to have a miniature replica of the Vietnam Veterans Wall there. We'll have the Southern Wayne ROTC, Junior ROTC, and the Rosewood ROTC. We'll hang a dog tag on Battlefield Cross for all 39 names. We'll recognize them individually of the North Carolinians that are still missing in action. I won't count for them. And then we'll have Latin freshmen at the end of it. So we'd love to see any or all of you. And if you see somebody with a Vietnam Veterans hat on, just remember that they did not get treated very well and they came home like us today, so thank you.
It was a great ceremony. I went last year, it was a good ceremony.
Looking forward to having you again.
I'll be there.
Thanks, ma'am.
Madam Chair, if I may say so, but I grew up on Seymour Johnson during this time period. I might be one of the few that was out on the flight line when these heroes did come home. And I went to school with more than one of my friends whose fathers didn't come home. Robert Govan is one of my friends whose father did not make it. And I remember when you guys did the parade for the very first Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans. And it was amazing because there were a lot of people that hated the men and women that came home for the wrong reasons. And that was a healing point. And you guys brought the wall in that day for the first time. And it's a beautiful thing to be a part of.
I couldn't believe how many people were out there that day when we brought the motorcycles in, you know?
It was incredible.
And we turned that corner, and well, just the motorcycles alone. I mean, I left here, they asked me, they're like, "Can you get 150 bikes?" And I'm like, "Sure, we can figure that out." So the wall was coming from Roxborough. And I left here, I left the DMV parking lot, well, Bojangles, with nearly 100 bikes. We got to RDU Sheets, there was another 200 bikes there. Then we went up. There's a... As you get towards Roxborough, there's a little gas station that sits off on the left-hand side by itself. And I just made a call, I was on the phone with the lady that was at the wall. And I'm like, "You just need to come on because we're not going to be able to make it in time to get back down here." And she had 200 more bikes up there. So by the time we got to Wayne County, we were rolling almost 600 bikes. Durham, we went right through Durham with two motorbikes, no, six motorbikes and two cruisers. And we never stopped one time. We were probably about a mile and a half to two miles long. But yeah, that was a glorious day. I think that was huge for a lot of veterans in Wayne County.
You could see it on their faces. You could. Many of them had tears going down their cheeks because they had never been thanked before that day.
And that's just...
It's really important.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Carol mentioned, you know, one that didn't come home. There were several from Wayne County that did not come home.
There's a monument in the Veterans Park, all the way in the corner over there, by the back entrance.
It was, you know... That was in my timeframe, and a lot of my classmates went. And I don't know whether I was lucky or unlucky, but I got hurt playing sports in high school. And I was examined twice and failed to physical both times. And I just, you know, I've always wondered, you know? But I guess God had something else for me to do. But, you know, it's... But really, I mean, I had a neighbor that didn't come home. But it's... It was really a thankless episode. I mean, it was, you know, they questioned Korea sometime, but Korea was... There was a reason to be there, but, you know, and it's just my personal opinion, you know? Why were we in Vietnam, start with? I mean, I just, you know, that's Wayne's opinion now, that's...
That's deep rabbit hole.
Yep, yep, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on now to the Appointment Committee. And a motion to approve the appointment of Josh Mazinger to the Pipe and Planning Board ETJ position.
Yes, Madam Chair, we've got a motion on the floor now for... To appoint Josh Mazinger to the Pipe and Planning ETJ position.
Motion on the floor. Daughtry to appoint Josh Mazinger.
Additionally, Madam Chair, we are making a recommendation for a vote at our next meeting for the appointment of Ruth Fason to the Wayne County Council on Aging. And secondly, recommending Richard Proctor to the Wayne County Planning Board. And those will come up for a vote at our next meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, moving on to unfinished business. Oh, did we vote for it? Yeah. Moving on to number six is a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the construction of Rosewood Middle School.
So in your packet, there's a breakdown... Excuse me, we did the full GMP and we also did the kind of simplified version that includes all the costs. That would be construction costs and soft costs. So the GMP came out at roughly $34.8 million. And then on the next page of your packet, we have that $34.8 million plus all the soft costs. So architects' fees, geotech services, feasibility study, mobile units, things of that nature that are associated with the price. So the total cost was right at $38 million. We have $25.325 million in grants. So right now, that shortfall would be about $12.7 million. If you remember, you had an agreement with the school board where your commitment would be $10 million. But then the two boards would mutually decide on that overage when the time came. So what we'd be asking, what they're asking for today is to approve that GMP so they can go ahead and mobilize and get started on that.
We got to come up with $3 million more dollars?
$2.7, right.
What was the total price again?
It's $38,849,337.78 is the GMP.
And the architect fees was how much on that project?
Plus, there was a feasibility study on top of that.
What was the feasibility study?
That was to look at the, you know, looking at the school to see what could be saved and could not be saved.
I think that was done before the design work was undertaken. That was to see if renovation was feasible, which buildings could remain in place, which needed to be come down.
And could I question in regards to the $226,000 for mobile units?
That's where the district had to mobilize all of the classrooms that the current sixth, seventh grade students are in.
Do we own this?
The county owns those.
So that's all setup fees and delivery?
Delivery, setup fees, yes. Because the eighth grade is currently in the high school because there were vacant space there. Then the sixth and seventh grader housed in one building and then modular units.
Just seems like a lot of money for mobilization and moving and setting up of classrooms. $226,000?
That's five, six, there's six buildings, there are.
At least. One's a quad that has four classrooms in it, bathrooms.
So that include deployment, electrical, and everything, or is that something separate?
I'd have to look at how... I'd have to see how it's broken out.
Well, I know I've been out of the manufactured modular housing business for several years, but for that delivery charge, I need to get back in it.
Which page are you looking at?
Do I have?
Which page are you looking at?
I'm just looking at the $226,000 for mobile units. We didn't buy any mobile units, did we?
No, we moved them all from... Most of them came from Northwest Elementary School when Fremont opened. So when Fremont opened, instead of purchasing modular units, the district moved vacant mobile units from Northwest to Rosewood.
And then what does this estimated debt cost?
That's the amount that we incur when we go out to borrow money. So attorney's fees, issuance fees, things of that nature that the bank charges us.
And have we discussed this borrowing with our financial advisor, Devin Port?
Yes, we have.
And that's all within...
Angie, you want? Yeah, it is.
They've got a plan for us to handle this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I would point out the, as part of the CMAR costs, where did it go? The traffic signal, $250,000, that should be reimbursable by... reimbursed by DOT. We're responsible for doing that work, but DOT will reimburse us. That's... For some, there's a state statute on that regarding their reimbursement, so...
So go back over the whole... This is the building?
Yeah, I can't... I don't know which alternates were included.
Harold probably can go over, but it's everything except the classrooms, as far as I'm aware.
So when you look at the GMP page, you're on the correct page, you're right. So if you scroll down to the bottom of that page where it's got the $34,849, that cost encompasses Phase 1 and Phase 2. So the Phase 2 GMP was $31,817. That's for the actual construction of the new building. And then the Phase 1 included that $225,000 for pre-construction Phase 1 GMP. $2.8 million was clearing everything and getting the building pad. That brings that to $34,849, and then all of those other costs that have been... And the alternates for this are in green when you scroll up.
All right, so let me just... Okay, wait just a minute, and this thing's ready towards you.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine.
Without the $2.8 million, which is basically demolition of the existing building, right?
Demo and pad ready.
Okay, so without that, we can't do the $31 million, right? What I'm saying is, we can't put a building in place...
Without...
Without demo. And I guess that's the part that really gets me when we talk about soft cost and this cost and that cost. You know, the building don't cost $31 million, it costs $35 million.
Correct.
I mean, because, I mean, the reality is you can't put a building in the same place as another building. So I don't... And when we start talking about the soft cost, all those costs are part of the building construction. So when it's all said and done, the total figure is going to be how much? 30, what, 38?
38.
Yeah, a little over 38.
So that building, it costs us $31, or 27, this costs us $38 million.
Once you calculate all your outside CMAR contract costs, furniture, everything.
That's everything, that's, I mean, that is the building.
Architecture fees, everything.
Everything, that's... We can't do the building without all of that involved.
You cannot.
I just, I mean, a lot of people say, "Well, the building ain't cost us so-and-so, wouldn't it?" You know, the actual concrete and carpet might not, but everything else that goes along with it, you got to have it to make you work.
Yep, correct.
And we're... And we're working with Davenport right now, if you go to eight, page eighteen of your agenda packet, we got a cash flow estimate for the project. So we're working right now to determine, you know, we have grant funds on hand and those should last us, we think, probably probably about January of next year. So we're working with Davenport right now to determine when's the best time to go out for borrowing and bring that back to you. The LGC has some requirements about, they have to have the current audit, year's audit in hand. So that, you know, makes late of this, late twenty twenty five probably not possible. So we're trying to determine if we want to go early in in the fall, or if we want to wait until maybe February or March, which would mean we would have to reimburse ourselves a little bit, but we've done that with other projects, so we might have to cash flow it a little bit. But we're working on that timeline right now.
So good, but did that slide prior to that, which got the black and white in a column? Yes.
And that maneuvering is all just to take like the better rates on the loan?
Yeah, keep on scrolling, all right there. All right, so grant wise, and that's coming from?
That's your SCIF grant, and then that was your block grant.
Okay.
Two different grants.
Twenty five million, twenty five, three. So actually, what this county commissioners has got in this one is twelve eight round figures, as it sits right now.
As it sits, we've been using that grant fund, those grant funds already to fund this contract, the work.
But when it's all said and done, we'll have about twelve eight in it.
Twelve, seven, two, two.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that number includes contingency and things like that as well.
So the contingency on this project is over a million dollars one. I'll see that wrong. Let's see, seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy thousand is the contingency. And I, the fee, I guess, is?
Four point five percent.
Yeah, seven seventy is your three percent contingency.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I I know that I was involved with this going along, and and maybe it's just the formatting as such, but I do have a few questions. One, I'd like to see a breakdown of this two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, I'm sorry, the cost of moving the
Modules?
The module units, two hundred and twenty six, four seventy five, I'd like to see a breakdown on that. Secondly, what is six hundred and ten thousand for various items? In the top of there on the CMAR contract, six hundred and ten thousand for various items. What would various items be? I need, if you can provide me with a breakdown of that. Additionally, you got a hundred thousand dollars for general allowance. What would that be? I mean, if you got a contingency already, I can't understand what the general allowance of a hundred thousand would be. And then on top of that, you've got a four hundred and eighteen thousand allowance and alternate overhead and fee.
So it's like a fee after fee after fee. And time you figure up all them fees, you're over another million dollars.
So I I I, and it may be just simply a difference of how it was presented when we met.
Is that?
But I I I need to see what these breakdown fees are, or breakdown on these fees.
Is that the one point one eight fee on the, on this page right here, Joe?
On which page?
Yeah, what page?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, they've got it broken down in several different pages.
I think that might be where that where that fee comes up in the.
There's a more specific breakdown in that first document of the GMP. This is just an overview that we use, simplify it.
So I need to go, well, I went to cost breakdown, and that's where I came up with that, so which one are you going to?
It's the
The original.
Final GMP revised.
The final? Well.
That has a more detailed breakdown.
That's the second page, Carol. So we just, we just lumped the the various items for all of these. Other than listing them again, it was already broken down.
Broken down. Right.
Your six hundred and ten thousand is in this group.
The six hundred and?
The six hundred and ten thousand, five twenties is in this group, that begins with the LSC one, electronic monumental signs.
So that's what was presented at the working group. Just kind of consolidated some of those numbers.
And it all ties back to this.
Well, it just.
Here was your foreediting for the allowance and alternative overheads, so all of these items increase your overhead amount and your allowance amount.
So that goes back to 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 getting a certain figure. Because every time it bumps up, the fee goes up.
The CMAR.
Right, because it's, well, because it's a percentage of the base.
That's what I'm saying, so every time, I mean, it's in their benefit, you know, to bump, you know, for every, everything we go up on, it increases that that figure.
So you want me to talk about the alternates, that discussion? We saved a little bit of money there. If you look in the green alternate two, three, seven, and eight, there was some discussion, and I did a presentation with the working group, because in the original plans, or looking at an alternate, it was alternate one was adding eight additional classrooms to the school.
Right.
To build the school out from about five twenty five sixty core to a seven hundred and twenty seat core. That alternate came in at about one, one point two was its projected for those classrooms, I think.
But that's the section that you talked about, kind of?
Right, so in in the discussion, one of the the things I presented and felt strongly about it was that if if you went with a middle school at seven hundred and twenty, you were going to have a school larger than the high school can handle. And the school board has right now voted for the configuration to be five eight because of K three class sizes and not having the capacity at the elementary school to send up a a large enough cohort of children to fill up the middle and then fill up the high. So my suggestion was to, if there was consensus, to not do the eight additional classrooms, because you're going to have to come back at some point in time to make it efficient and do something at the high school, as well as add classroom space to the elementary school. Because of the elementary school's already over capacity by about thirty students. So.
It has got fifth grade in it.
Fifth grade now.
Yeah.
And even if you move it, you're still over, you move fifth grade to the middle school, you're still over capacity, you're only going to free up a little over twenty some seats at the elementary school, with fifth grade going to the middle. So my suggestion was that if there was an appetite or an interest in spending additional dollars, not putting it at the middle school, but putting it, not at the elementary to get the eight classrooms there, leave fifth grade there, so you've got a better configuration for children. And then that gives you enough room in your pattern to have efficiency. And then it gives the school district an opportunity that if they face some pressure from Northwest or from Norwayne or from CBA, they've got enough room that they could adjust lines to send students to Rosewood and Rosewood High without having to build something right away.
Well, that makes sense to put them at, to put, to keep the fifth grade at the elementary school because of the age. I mean, there's, I mean, I know it's not but a year, but but a year makes a difference when you're talking about transition to a middle school.
Right, and when the project started, we're, we're two years out now, I mean, it's hard, it takes about four years to construct a school. When the project started, the discussion of having the fifth grade over at the middle school, the thought process was that if we only had a small pot of money and we have this inefficiency from the school district side, could we, the old cliche about killing two birds with one stone, could we replace a nineteen twenty four middle school and then get some space at the elementary school, so the pattern could be more efficient? Or students that move in could have a place to go. But looking back on it now, when you look, when you look at it, and you really look at the data, which is kind of where I got convicted, looking at this thing, saying, hey, for taxpayer, for the city industry, it's probably not wise at this point to build eight additional classrooms there, because you're you're bigger than the high school and you're still not going to have efficiency at the elementary.
Uh, so the padwork, is the padwork already completed?
Padwork's completed, face. No, the padwork is completed for the base, which was bid out in the five hundred and twenty five sixty.
So not that additional classrooms has not been?
Correct. Now, now the district does obviously possess the plans that in the future, if there is a need.
So the building's not moved anyway, they can, down the road twenty years from now, they can, they could?
Yes, and all of your, all of your site work had to be done, you know, in order so the school could be enlarged in the future, and that's where the stoplight comes from that Andrew was talking about. Because NC DOT recommended that a traffic signal be at the Rosewood High School entrance, which will have to be expanded to handle both schools.
Is that with or without? Is that with or without that, or is that with the additional classrooms?
That, that will be, that's required for the seven hundred and twenty. So it's basically in the base to require it, because the school district's going to need it if it ever is expanded. So that was bid in the base. Right, but and that's the expense that Andrew was talking about, that since the district would be doing work in the NC DOT right of way for NC DOT, NC DOT will reimburse, in this case, the county for that expense.
And that's how much again?
Two hundred.
Two hundred and some thousand.
Two fifty.
So two hundred and fifty thousand will come back to the county after it's all said and done?
At least, you probably going to have a little bit more, because the district's going to have to do an architect adjustment, a change request for the architect to handle that for NC DOT. So obviously, it might be three hundred thousand or more that comes back.
But the reason for that study and for the traffic, like, right there, would be to expand in the future if need be.
Right.
So that way, we don't have to go back and rip up everything.
Now's the time to do it, I mean, thinking ahead, I mean, even that, even if you need or don't need, I mean, it's going to help the traffic flow regardless, I mean, people getting off the record, they'll be.
So you want to table this until we get more detailed information?
No, I I, I, I mean, I see where you've lumped some some things together in order to come up with this. So you consolidated some of this, and I now see that. I still would like, I mean, I I will not withhold approval. I would like still get a breakdown on those costs of transporting and resetting up those mobile units, because I'm telling you, I'm in the business, and that is extraordinarily high. So I'd I'd like to see a breakdown.
I'd also like information on the general tab and the allowance and alternate overhead.
Right, so if we can just get that information, I I don't want to slow down the process.
Okay.
We need to.
Well, this ain't slowing down the process.
No, I mean, it wouldn't make any difference.
If we go, I mean, because you're, you're, we're, basically what we're doing is voting on something blind, if we ain't got the information.
No, the district's trying to proceed April first.
So, so you're okay with us holding off and voting on this at our next meeting? Or is that going to slow y'all down in any way?
The district's trying to give the notice to proceed April first, to try to make.
We got a meeting on April first.
And we got a meeting on April first, as it turns out.
April Tuesday either.
Not try, try to make, October right now is the, we're trying to hit the mark, we're trying to be up and for the twenty six, twenty seven school year.
Would the notice to proceed go out on the first, or you're, there, Daniels and Daniels is looking to mobilize and be on site April first?
They would like to mobilize, be on site April first.
I can give one small piece of information, I don't know if it makes a difference at all, but on the mobile units, the description of the invoice that we paid by was for one forty eight foot by seventy two foot four piece complex and also three twenty four foot by thirty six foot classroom complexes, broken down and re.
So that's twelve pieces delivered.
And set up.
And they set them up and hooked up the plumbing and sewer and everything.
Now, that's only that particular invoice, we have not received the second and final invoice. That's only for hundred and sixty nine thousand, but we went ahead and included the full amount for all costs.
My my little question.
Was was that put out for bid?
We tried to find multiple companies to do it, but we ended up, it's very difficult, it seems like now, to find house movers or modular unit movers.
And the thing is, I mean, we're we're going to have to pay this regardless. So, I mean, holding up the vote for for the information isn't going to change anything, because it's already out.
Well, I I I agree, I just wanted to know the information.
So can we approve it?
I don't have a problem moving forward.
I don't have a problem with it either, we got an empty lot sitting there.
That's fine, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the GMP. With the
Just get us the information.
You have to break, break down of everything that Joe wants and Chip wants.
Madam Chair, while that vote is going on, I do want to point out to the board that our committee met with the the school members, and we decided that we would be bringing forth a proposal to build those additional classrooms at Rosewood Elementary. So the dollars that we were, had designated to build classrooms at the Rosewood Middle School, we're going to use those dollars instead to, with another project of building the classrooms at Rosewood Elementary.
Have we got plans for that?
We have schematic designs, because, you know, I say we, the district, I mean, sort of we commissioners. The district has schematic designs, because as you remember, when this commission board tried three times to pass the quarter cent sales tax, those projects at Northwest and Rosewood for an expansion were on the quarter cent sales tax. So the district already has schematic designs. And the estimate right now is about two point eight to three million dollars.
Is that with the existing cost of construction?
Yes.
As of?
As of today.
So I just wanted to bring that, we're not bringing that forward today, but that should be coming here within the next few months.
So how much do we have in the plan per se to construct the eight classrooms at the middle school? How much was that?
We don't have anything.
How much was it proposed?
The original estimate was three point two million.
Yeah.
In the, in, when the original estimate was done, that if the commission or the school board elected to do everything, every alternate that was there, it was originally at three point two. Now, the the actual bid came back at one point two, one point three. The alternates actually came back less than what they were projected to be, because the contractors are already on site. So that in this plan, the alternates that the school board and the county are receiving is you'll get a renovation to the eighth grade building that's sitting there. It's being connected, so of course, when you connect it, you've got to bring it up to code, it doesn't have sprinklers, those things. The roof is at end of life, so that's the three forty eight. And then the hardware stuff is just getting hardware pieces that the district prefers over what has to be spec to give everybody an opportunity, right, to to present or bid certain options with there. This will provide you a school that every classroom and child is under the same roof.
So we've got, she got to come up with funding for the, on another project for the elementary.
I I believe that those plans are loosely based off when Northwest, when originally, if you recall, I mean, this was maybe eighteen, nineteen, the original plan was to build a wing out there at Northwest. And and instead of that, we went with the Fremont Elementary route.
Right, right.
So I think it's loosely designed off that. We're not under contract or anything, I only also bring it up, any borrowing wouldn't, wouldn't be in time for this borrowing.
Agreed.
It it wouldn't be wrapped into what we're doing here.
Right, I I just wanted the the board to know that that's coming, coming about. That was the, it was highly recommended. In fact, I was shocked to see that the state groups elementary, middle school, and high school, and the elementary, according to the state, has generally always been kindergarten through five. But yet, we are having elementary schools that are kindergarten through four, and five has been moved to the middle schools.
Well, a lot of that.
And that shouldn't happen.
A lot of that was, a lot of that was city schools back in the day, right?
There were some city, and then I I think they're trying to look at utilization of of space and dollar amounts too, because we know what it costs to build.
Well.
But I think this is an opportunity.
It is an opportunity to get it back adjusted with the state.
But where's?
But anyway, yeah, we can, uh, now provide the schools to go ahead and make it approved tomorrow, and then they can go ahead and get them out there working on it. Sounds good.
They said it'll be ready for which school year?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So take about eighteen months.
Did, did y'all vote on that already?
We did. We, we voted unanimously, so go ahead.
Uh, moving on to the next item, number sevens, a motion to approve the feasibility study contract for the courthouse annex and Chestnut Street Detention Center and Eight Hundred Corporate Drive to Intrepid Architecture Subject to the County Attorney's Approval and an Appropriate Budget Amendment. And, uh, this is a study, a reuse study on our existing building over here, the old jail. How, whether it's gonna be feasible to convert it into some other usable space, uh, what it's gonna take to upgrade the building, the mechanicals, the electrical. It's also looking at this building for, this building is in need of some minor work, and it has some ADA compliance issues uh, that need to be addressed, and also we would be looking at redesigning the interior and exterior of Eight Hundred Corporate Drive. And, uh, Intrepid is owned by Alby McLawhorn, and he did our, uh, study on the health and, uh, COB building and determined that it was probably not worth renovating. If you, you know, if you renovated it, you'd have to, he looked at all angles and it's gonna give us the best estimate or best guidance on whether to, uh, new construction is cheaper than renovation. And, uh, that's what he'd be doing here, is in that same, uh, manner. And I'd be looking for approval of that contract subject to, uh, county attorney approval.
Madam Chair, could I inquire on something? I'm reading here that it's saying that we anticipate the project construction cost to be between twenty-one and thirty-five million, depending on the final scopes, for the renovated jail tower portion alone.
What'd he say?
Now, are.
That's wrecking ball territory right there.
I, I, that is, I mean, uh, we would, I hope that in this, we are asking them to make a recommendation of whether or not to demolish and build new versus renovation.
It is.
Do what now?
That's what it's all about.
That's what this is all about.
We also have to get into more details about what we want in the building, which may dictate the final cost.
So all that is in the scope of this, this project.
Yes, sir. That being said, though, that's just this project. Down the road, if we want to do other projects, we got the same, we got to go back through that same amount of core drilling, concrete, and everything, so we need to kinda think down the road on that as well. If we had to go back and, if we upgrade anymore of the, uh, the jail port, or change the use of it, I guess.
And we would be structuring this contract similar to what we did with Mosley at the jail. So task one would be the feasibility study, and then task two would be the, the full design.
Oh, okay.
Um, Mosley, um, in that contract, the fee was set out for design, given the nature of that building right there. It's just an option, we would have to do an amendment to the contract to set that price, but they would be under contract for full design as well.
So that, that also, whatever is decided on what we do on that tower, there's gonna be some cosmetic, there's gonna be some, uh, cus, uh, structural tie-ins to whatever we do. So we need to kinda keep that in mind as well, so we don't spend money twice, I guess.
There are mechanical issues to, you know, well.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the feasibility study contract for the courthouse annex, uh, and the appropriate budget amount.
Mr. Drucker made the motion.
Mine didn't come up. I did, but it won't.
Appreciate that. Uh, moving on to, we'll be looking for your consent agenda approval.
Don't move.
Thank you for that, and under new business, we would have the discussion of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at twelve P M as the date and time for ribbon cutting at the DHHS building. Any concerns or questions about that ribbon cutting ceremony?
Is that regular meeting day?
Yes. Do you need a motion on that?
I think, I think that would be behind the habit consensus, but that's entirely up to you. Um, I, I would like a motion if you would.
I so move. That we establish April fifteenth at twelve o'clock, uh, for the ribbon cutting on the DSS Human Services Building.
Then it means that day's gonna be locked, in here anyway.
Maybe.
Maybe.
And could I inquire, we are, what is the, a name of this building, is it the Human Services Building?
It's the, the Health and Human Services.
It's gonna be Health and Human Services?
Yeah.
Well, health is a human service, so, um, but it's gonna be Health and Human Services.
It's labeled as Health and Human Services.
Okay.
Human Services, DSS.
So be it.
Um, any other questions on that? I'll move on to county manager's report. I will report that, um, the, uh, the, um, tax notices or, uh, revow notices are going to printer and they'll be mailed out. So that should be hitting the mailboxes by the end of the week. Of course, uh, issue this, you know, those notices of value do not dictate what you're gonna pay in taxes until this board establishes what the tax rate is gonna be, so I just urge that, uh, don't panic when you read your, uh, revaluation notice, that they will be hitting the mailboxes by the end of the week. And that's all I have on my county manager's report.
I'm, I'm not gonna panic, but your thirty-some thousand other ones are.
And then it goes to your Board of Commissioners Committee reports.
Mr. Drucker?
Earlier today, we honored Will Sullivan and started to make comments, uh, at that time. But, uh, since we're a little early today, I'm kinda reminisce a bit. It's amazing as you go through life, how you change your positions on certain issues, uh, and here's a good example of it. Um, when the construction of this courthouse was proposed, there was a new method of financing that was on the scene, and it authorized counties to use certificates of participation. And I was totally against certificates of participation. In fact, I was part of the group that actually sued the county, uh, over. I'm just going down memory lane. Actually sued the county stating that that was illegal to actually use certificates of participation. At that time, the only way a county could borrow money was with a vote of the people. This new form of financing that was allowed by the General Assembly, uh, stated the, the counties now could use certificates of participation. And just the word in itself just irritated me, but we did, did in fact sue. Um, and in fact, uh, former Congressman Butterfield was the judge at the time that heard that case. Uh, we, of course, lost, and, and the county did in fact finance this under certificates of participation. But Will and I had been in a conversation over that, and, uh, honored him, uh, for his work for the county. Uh, and it was just a new way of, of actually financing. Nowadays, we do that just almost, we don't call it certificates of participation. We just go out and borrow the money. Um, but it's amazing how, how things kinda evolve, just going down memory lane a bit. I look forward to the, to the, uh, start of construction of the Rosewood Middle School. I think that is long overdue. Um, I hate that it costs so much, but that's the age that we live in now, uh, evidently. So with that in mind, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair.
Mr. Echov.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I attended the Wayne Community College Dinner last night. Uh, they're having a board meeting today, they didn't look at the calendar, didn't realize that I couldn't be there, but I'm, it's gonna be all day, so just as soon as we wrap up here, I'm going to the college to, uh, uh, get an update and work on the budget for the community college. Uh, also, I would, uh, like to thank the, all of the patrons that, uh, came by in the Hunter Fire Department Saturday and, and, uh, for our fundraiser. Uh, it was, uh, I think it's the smoothest, uh, dinner that we've ever put on. We serve twenty-two hundred plates, starting at about three o'clock, and we're through by five thirty. Uh, but all of the people in the community that came out to help, that's not even connected to the fire department, I wanna thank all of them. And, uh, we, uh, you know, we, we don't, we don't only just rely, rely on, on tax dollars for our department. I can't speak for the others, but, uh, we do still have fundraisers to, to help burden the, the tax rate. And again, just thank everyone for their participation Saturday. You know, other than that, that's all I have, madam.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, as I said earlier, I appreciate the opportunity you allow me to, uh, present that, Mr. Will. He, um, he was a, uh, family friend for all of my life, and, um, he was, uh, him and Daddy, uh, go back a long ways, and, and therefore Ron and I as well. Um, so I, I do appreciate y'all allowing me to do that. Uh, next thing, I want to, uh, thank, um, an employee at the Jeffries Building, uh, for, uh, uh, making sure that, um, our female employees, uh, when they're harassed, uh, by some of our, um, people that walk through, um, harassing them, I appreciate their, uh, their, um, um, commitment to the safety of our, um, uh, of our employees in that area. Uh, thanks to the facilities and I T for, uh, their teamwork in getting the, um, building secure, uh, through, trying to eliminate some of the actions that we were having inside the building, uh, from those same, uh, individuals. Um, there's, I, I was there, I've been by a, a few times in the last couple of weeks, and I've seen some of the contractors and, um, some asking why, what's up with this, that kinda thing, and I explained it to them, and they were like, we have no idea about that. Y'all did the right thing. Um, uh, and of course, one made the comment, y'all need to clean the parking lot up cause there's needles and everything else in the parking lot. I said, uh, we're working on that as well, and I think, I think, I know that Dave kinda takes care of that on a sweeping basis in the parking lot. Um, we did have an incident here the other week, uh, uh, that somebody had to run somebody off, um, uh, again, so, uh, that person, I appreciate you making sure that our, uh, our employees are, are safe. Uh, and they're not doing it just at nighttime anymore, they're doing it, they bake their rounds at lunchtime and at five o'clock. Uh, so, uh, the next thing, um, the, uh, we need to make sure that we thank our nine-one-one operators, um, because, uh, Dave's, Dave's crew, uh, the sheriff's crew, uh, the fire department, we can't do our job without them doing theirs. And we've had some fairly intense weather between us, uh, ice storms, slick roads, and, uh, severe thunderstorms. And, and they, uh, um, they can't get out and go get lunch like some of us can. Um, so, you know, we need to, we need to thank them, and if you, you get a chance, you know, go by and drop off something to them, tell them thank you. Cause they, uh, and they appreciate it. Uh, and I think that's it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, just some thank yous, thank yous again to, um, all of the staff here for the county. Commissioners, thank you for your vote on the GMP for the school district. Uh, as I have sat here since December and still getting educated, I have a, a really good appreciation on, uh, your, your opinions, your positions, and everything that the county of Wayne does for our citizens. Being able to look at our new jail facility, the DHHS facility, our E and Ts, all the services that the county provides. Uh, I think we're very blessed that we live in a county, excuse me, that has some resources to be able to provide these services to our citizens, cause there are, are some counties around us and school districts. I know in the business I've been in for the last twenty-eight years that really still struggling, haven't built a school in well over twenty years just because of the economic situation those counties in. I think that, uh, is a clear statement on the past leadership and leadership that the county currently has, which includes the, the Board of Commissioners, Chip, Andrew, Ginger, everyone in this room, as well as Mr. Will Sullivan. And those that I didn't have an opportunity to know, but the vision was there and to be able to provide something for our citizens in the future. And I think that's, um, something that we need to kinda keep in mind. I try to keep in mind is that I know we're short-term caregivers, but every decision that we make has an impact in the future to, uh, for our citizens. So thank you again for that and, and your opinions and feedback on that process for the school. Um, had an opportunity this week to attend the ECC meeting again, uh, also attended the Wayne Mental Health Association, um, meeting at St. Luke Church. Uh, enjoyed just sitting there and having some conversation with some of those, uh, individuals there, just kinda discussing mental health, uh, in the county. And we got some more stuff coming up this week to keep us, uh, busy. So, some more community meetings and stuff like that, but, uh, just thank you again to everyone, and appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. Foster?
Um, no comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If, before you close out, I, uh, I forgot to mention the fact, um, that our citizens are gonna be receiving their notice in regards to, um, property revow. I've gone through one of those. Uh, this one is probably gonna be, have more heartburn, uh, on our citizens' minds when they get that notice in the mail. But I want to have a calming effect here and let everyone know that I know these people that sit on this board. And I can assure you that when it comes down to lowering the tax rate, those taxes or, or rate will be lowered to accommodate what the revow would be. Now, do recognize that our cost of operations are going up just like everyone at home. So, we're not saying it's gonna be exactly the same as a neutral rate, but I can assure you that you've got a conservative board that will be working all it can to keep that at a minimum adjustment in your budgets. So I, I just wanted to go ahead and mention that ahead of time, before you get that notice in the mail. Because don't take the notice, and whatever the value is, and multiply it out at the current tax rate, because that just is not gonna be the case. So just hold tight, we will be announcing the, the new rate probably in June. And I can assure you, it's, it's going, not gonna be as big a bump as you might think. Thank you very much.
Madam Plur, oh, Madam Chair. Mr. Gurley mentioned the, uh, nine-one-one call takers and dispatchers, and, and there is a difference. A part of them take the call and transfer it to the dispatcher, but if anyone knows anyone and is looking a, a job, it's, uh, it can be a very stressful job, but we are always looking for the employees at the nine-one-one center, uh, either as call takers or dispatchers. And, uh, and like I say, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna candy coat anything, it can be a very stressful job sometimes because, uh, they're the, basically our, our call takers are the first one on the scene, they, they're, they're not physically, but, uh, but I, they get, they can get emotional, emotional like any. they can get emotional, emotional like anybody else, but, uh, but if you know anyone that's interested in, in working at the nine-one-one center, please go to the county website and, and, uh, we, HR will be glad to talk to them, take applications, see what their qualifications are. But that's, that's one department that we're, we're always needing somebody. Thank you.
Hunter Fire Department, great meal. Thank you, Wayne. I also attended to the gala, First Responders, Saturday night. Great event. And I have a video, I think we can show it, Carol, uh, for the reentry program on the board that I'm on. I would like to share that they've received an award for what they're doing. Wanted to share this with the rest of the board. This is through Wayne Community College.
On behalf of my futurancy, congratulations to Wayne Community College and the Wayne County Reentry Council on being named a twenty-twenty-five champion for attainment. Wayne Community College and the Wayne County Reentry Council supports formerly incarcerated individuals by providing education, employment services, and essential resources for a successful transition. Established in twenty-twenty-two, the initiative reduces recidivism through job readiness workshops, training programs, and partnerships with local employers. Wayne Community College leads the effort promoting workforce development and social stability while addressing societal stigma.
October of twenty twenty, the sheriff of Wayne County started the Wayne County Detention Center Substance Misuse Program. One of the areas that we saw a gap was upon release, where people needed some reentry services. And Wayne Community College stepped up to the plate and said, we'll be glad to start a Wayne County Reentry Council.
I get so emotional because I spent so much time away. And when I came here and I found out about this reentry program, it really has been a three sixty for me. You're looking at somebody that's forty-one years old. And do you know, this is the longest that I've ever been out of incarceration, since I was eleven years old. I've never been out of prison this long.
Reentry is not easy. We have developed some really great collaborations here in our community. And one area that we knew we had to be deep diving in with those coming out of incarceration. And I think case management and the communication and network between multiple organizations is absolutely vital.
To be able to be a part of someone's process as they're looking for that second chance has truly been life-changing. People come in, I meet them all the time. They have different needs. They have different desires. We create different plans of actions. Um, and we celebrate every step. A lot of the individuals that I work with are not looking for handouts. They are truly looking for handouts. So, when I wear this, and I wear it proudly.
I'm a North Carolina Certified Peer Support Specialist, and that's just like the best thing that I could have did. I felt like when I got my peer support specialist, I felt like I got a doctorate, because I really get to, to be me, and I, I get to meet people that came from, you know, the same walks of life that I did, and I get to show them, like, hey, we can, we can turn this around. Nothing that you can't do when you just put your right foot forward, the right one, not the wrong one, put the right one forward.
Our goal in the community colleges is to help individuals make a better life for themselves. We want to meet individuals where they are and take them where they want to be.
Wayne Community College is here to serve our community. You know, we want to meet the educational, training, and cultural needs of everybody in our communities. Reentry Council fits very well into that mission. They are part of our community, and we want to serve them just like we would any citizen in our community.
Thank you, Carol. I just wanted to show that because that was, that will be, you know, a reentry.
Good job.
Does anybody else have anything else to write for the board?
Nothing else, Madam Chair.
Okay. We'll close, march. Thank you.